All right, welcome everybody to the regular Galt City Council meeting for July the 15th. Mr. Splendario, do we have any report from the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The council convening closed session, but there's no report of action.
All right, thanks, sir. I'll now call the meeting to order. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please stand and join us for a silent prayer followed by a flag salute.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse Cable Systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replaced Friday, July 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 19th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
All right, thank you, Tina. Moving on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Mr. Reyes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff is recommending that we pull item J-15, the Fairway Oaks Final Map, from the agenda so that we can bring back, was it J? J-5, I'm sorry, J-5 from the agenda to be brought back at a future date. We do have some, we still have some work to do on some utility and easement issues, so we prefer to have time to resolve those issues before bringing that for Final Map approval.
All right, so item J-5. All right, so I know there's probably a lot of people that came tonight to speak on this item J-5, so I just want to let you know you guys still have the opportunity to speak under General Public Comment, which is going to be up here pretty quick. So if you've already turned in a speaker card, we won't make you do another one. If it's noted that you're going to speak on, Tina will call you up. So just letting you know, and if you haven't, if you came to speak on that item and you haven't turned a speaker card in, you can please do so. The speaker cards are at the left and right of the rear of the chambers. You could bring them up to Tina. Do we have any presentations this evening?
None this evening.
All right, item H, Public Comment. Tina, can you read her statement, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The Public Comments section is for the City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
How many public comments do we have?
On this particular item?
Yes.
Eight.
Eight, okay. All right, so what we're going to do...
Nine.
Nine.
Okay, okay. So before we proceed, just want to let everybody know that under General Public Comment, because it's not an agendized item, for those of you that may be doing this for the first time, we're not allowed to have dialogue with you except for maybe a brief question or something. So you'll come up, you'll make your statement. We're not allowed to engage with you and ask, if you ask us a question or something, we're not going to be able to answer you. So we're going to hear your statement, and then we'll have the next presentation. Just wanted to let you know how it works. And then you will have, we're going to go ahead and, because of the amount, and we have speakers on other items?
Yes.
Okay, so because of the amount, we're going to go ahead and do a three-minute instead of a five, and I apologize because that's a lot of comments, and I'm sure they're all going to be similar. So we're going to do a three-minute for the public comment tonight, because we can't change it mid-stream, so I have to set the precedent in the beginning. So...
So I'm going to be setting the timer on my phone.
Okay, all right. First public comment, then?
Paul Salinas.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilpersons and staff, and gentlemen and ladies, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to just bring up something very briefly. Back in January, two senior individuals came in to and expressed a concern related to issues in senior apartments or apartment facility. And I was just wondering, is there a report from that particular, as a result of the action taken by the council? Any report? Any results?
Again, sir, we're not allowed to.
Okay.
If you want, I can touch basically after the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next public comment?
Jay Vandenberg.
Hi, my name's Jay Vandenberg. Live at 955 Trade Post Trail, resident of Galt, former council member and mayor. I'm here about the Creekside and Cornell Road. You know, when I first found out about it, I was a little disappointed because I had walked the entire Cornell, what was at one time the Island Homes. I tried to speak to every single person in order to resolve the questions they had, and actually got, I wouldn't say forced, but staff was kind enough to reach out to the individuals to resolve the problems. Now we fast forward to today, and I find out we're going to have retaining walls. I don't know the height of them, but I'm concerned that if you're, I wouldn't want a home behind mine, two, three, four feet of dirt stacked up behind the retaining wall, and then a house added, it seems like it could disproportionately affect the homes along Glendale. I find out that I heard in writing that the city was considering, after the fact, closing Cornell Road, which would be illegal, as there would be only one point of egress, to my understanding. There was a couple of other items, but the main point is... Here, I probably have a minute. Yeah, and if Cornell's closed, most certainly, all the flow of traffic is going to go down Ranch Road. Driving around, it's quite clear that's the next obvious spot, both in and out. And it's already a little difficult to leave Ranch Road, because the stop sign, there's a car just quick enough to stop you from leaving. Also, the traffic study is too old. If you're making any changes to the flow of traffic, you have to redo the traffic study. I believe it's seven or more years old, so it's exceeded its timeline. But my overarching point that I want to make here is that when I hear about the STEM walls that are there for the benefit of the builders, closing Ranch Road or Cornell, they're not going to make the improvements now. That benefits the builders. Staff, Planning Commission, council members are all here supposedly, I would hope, working for the benefit of the city and the citizens. And all of the changes that I've heard and have occurred all seem to benefit the builder. In, to summarize, I would say that this is a sacrifice of many for the benefit of few, and we should do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff Hood.
I kind of for five minutes, but I'll amend it. Thank Mayor Farmer and councilmembers and staff. My name's Jeff Hood. I've lived on Bernal Road in Creekside for the last 32 years. When my wife and I moved there in 1993, we knew eventually that homes would be built beyond Ranch Road. And also, the maps at the time showed that homes would be built beyond Cornell. I'm not opposed to new development. I've been to workshops. I've supported the Fairway Oaks project, because I thought it was the best project that our neighborhood could expect. And seeing these connections with Cornell and Glendale were important to me. But I didn't expect the council to negate decades of planning and public votes for Fairway Oaks after the dirt started moving. I've been around government for 27 years as a newspaper reporter. I worked for a right-hand man for three city managers, Parks and Rec Director, Planning Commissioner, and I've never seen anything like this. You know, these maps have been around, variations of these maps have been around for more than 30 years. The last versions were approved in 2020, the tentative map. And again, in 2022, the Planning Commission, Councilmember Pratt was on the commission at the time, approved a two-year extension. And every time it's come up, the council or commission has approved the development with Cornell as an access point. In October, the October 6, 2020 council meeting, to decide on the annexation, which would include Cornell Road, Mr. Sandu said he supported and opened Cornell Road. The quote is, "I see a lot of comments about Cornell Road at the last council meeting. We did approve that," meaning the tentative map. "That road, we cannot close it. I want the Creekside people to understand this was already done at the last meeting." In 2022, the Planning Commission met to consider extending the tentative map. One of the most vociferous Cornell Road opponents said, according to the meeting minutes, quote, "That he was happy with the project, happy to see the original conditions of the approval are to remain in place." And there was not a single comment against the map extension. But now comes 2025. We have a disastrous community workshop on May 29th, which turned everything on its head. Creekside residents simply wanted to hear the presentation. Staff was unable to finish due to constant interruptions and hostile questions. I left the meeting in disgust early. And my disgust was compounded recently, when I learned that some city staff met with Cornell Road residents and then set in place a plan to accommodate the request and put more traffic on Ranch Road, traffic that wasn't disclosed in a study dating back to the previous decade. Where was our meeting invitation? Where was our opportunity to meet, to discuss how these proposed changes would affect our neighborhood? Cornell Road residents have fought against any change in their neighborhood for more than 30 years. That's fine, but they live on a public street. They're required to allow public access. They like their quiet lifestyle. So do we. If it's a matter of who screams the loudest or hijacks a public workshop, we can go there, and we have a lot more voices. Any thoughts about changing the tentative map should be discarded for once and for all. The Cornell, closing Cornell shifts the traffic burden to Ranch. It needlessly increases the potential for disastrous outcome for hundreds of current and future Galt residents in the event of a major freeway accident, wildfire, or chemical spill. Putting in the emergency access gate on Cornell has a potential to trap as many, many of the 1,000 residents who may need to exit their neighborhood quickly. We have riparian forests on multiple sides of the existing and future developments, putting us in a wildland urban interface. Kasumnas, Woodbridge Fire...
Mr. Hood, your three minutes is good. You can wrap up.
Okay.
Just take a few seconds to wrap.
Fire departments have responded multiple times to wildfires in Dry Creek. It's a fuel-rich area. We know what happened in Santa Rosa. We know what happened in Pacific Palisades, major loss of life. We have a railroad nearby. We have State Route 929. Both carry hazardous materials. Closing, it means basically one path in and out in the event of an emergency. 323 homes with one way in or out. We got 100-year storms happening every other year now. Dryer summers, hotter summers, and pinching off the exit routes.
Thank you, sir.
To benefit, all right, thank you very much.
Sorry, Mr. Hood.
As a Cahov resident, Cahov representative told my wife last week, "It's kind of like the Wild West out here, isn't it?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Gavin Voyn.
Good evening. So there were some things that were just said that I'd like to touch on. Cornell Road being closed would still allow for Glendale, Ranch, and Chase to be open to that development. Also, when the ranch people bought homes in the ranch development, they bought homes in about 159, count housing tract. They stepped across sidewalk, they looked at the neighbors on either side of their 7,000-square-foot homes, plus or minus, and they chose that lifestyle. Connecting to the Fairway Oaks development would be a development similar in size. So that's something that, when you guys bought those homes, you accepted. When people bought homes on Cornell Road, it was Frank Street back in the day, because it was Frank's driveway. Now Cornell Road, those homeowners own properties between an acre and seven acres. Very different lifestyle. Opening Cornell Road, that was a driveway that was eventually paved over, doesn't have the infrastructure like streetlights, doesn't have 46-foot-wide curb-to-curb driveways. It would be a safety hazard to open Cornell Road to 162 homes and 159 homes. I also believe that the main path of travel would probably be out the Glendale exit or entrance. Going up Fairway, which is an industrial roadway, majority of traffic wouldn't go down Ranch or Chase. I don't see that Cornell Road should be connected to the Fairway Oaks Development or Ranch Road. Very different homes, very different lifestyles. Cornell is a rural town gem. Losing that would be a loss to the whole city. I'm surprised that some of you here from the ranch development want it open, because so many of you guys walk through my neighborhood every weekend. So many of you enjoy Cornell and the fact that it's this quiet road that has such low vehicle traffic because it's closed. So I'm just shocked that you guys are coming after your neighbor whose private road you already enjoy the way it is. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Carol Smith.
Good evening. So my name is Carol Smith, and just to mimic some of what my neighbor Gavin Voyn has said. I don't know how long Cornell Road has been in existence, but my home was built in 1924. And when I moved there 23 years ago, that was certainly appealing to me, to have that quiet, quiet country road without a lot of traffic. Now, Cornell Road, of course, it runs east to west, on the far east side, leaving, if you want, exiting Cornell Road, or trying to exit, going to the last house on the south side of the street. That street is only 20 feet. I wonder if it's even legal to consider it. If cars would go in opposite directions just in passing, they could literally high-five each other. There's going to be no sidewalks. There won't be any safety factors for children. I have grandchildren, and when all these houses come, I'm going to be mortified of them playing out front and possibly being hit by a vehicle. That'd be a lot of traffic. And so I'll say in closing that on Glendale and also on Ranch Road and on Chase, there's already sidewalks there, as my neighbor said, about 46 feet wide. There's sidewalks, the infrastructure is there. It's not there on Cornell Road. So I'm one for keeping Cornell Road, closing it off permanently, and possibly even making it a permanent road. Thank you. A private road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anthony Souza.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilpersons. My name's Anthony Souza. I live on 914 Ranch Road. I think this is the first city council meeting I've ever came to to speak at, sorry to say. I've lived on Ranch Road since 1999. We've known since we moved in that a subdivision was going to go in. We just didn't know when. I followed it since 1999, and I didn't notice any concern because of the egresses, the four egresses that had been stated on all of the planning, going back to, I believe, a traffic study in 2012. I looked for this traffic study in 2012, could not find it. The Fairway Oaks Traffic Impact Study, which was finalized in 2020, references the report, but it's not on the city website that I could locate. But in the 2020 report, the 2020 City Council Agenda Fairway and Island Annexation Project, on a Planning Commission Agenda Report going back to 2022, and the May meeting of 2025, all of them listed Cornell as being an exit. I wish we had a 7,000-square-foot home for resale value purposes. That's all right. I think we're all here for the same reason. I grew up out in the country. I love country living. But once we open up our front door and we all step in, we're all stepping into the exact same thing, our homes. As far as kids, I was impacted by a good friend of mine in 2013 being killed by a traffic accident. I wish he could sit on our front porch that goes right by the crossroad. Traffic comes speeding in, cuts corners. One of these days, a little kid's going to be killed right there. The parents put flags up. The traffic that's coming through that area is going to increase dramatically. I agree with Jay on the traffic study. The one that you have is obviously, I don't know how many of you have driven north this time of the evening on 99 or drove in south. Traffic's totally different today than it was back in 2019, 2020. It takes me an hour sometimes to get up to Elk Grove, just off of Elk Grove Boulevard. All that was all country living up there. Times have changed. We're being told by the states that we need to put in these new subdivisions, and things have changed, and we got to grow with it. I look in the plan, and the plan addresses Cornell's drive road issue. It's going to, they're going to have a new road put in. They're going to have sidewalks put in. All of that stuff's got to be put in by the developer.
Please, please in the audience, please don't comment out loud when you're speaking, just to be respectful to the speaker.
No, I appreciate that, because the initial plans had sidewalks in, but in order to... What, in order to meet the neighborhood's needs, those sidewalks were taken out. They also reduced from 20 feet to 15 feet. So there were some concessions that were made. But to go ahead and put an emergency gate in there and close that street off totally is unacceptable to me and my neighbors and my family.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Brooke Stammer.
Hello, so I'll start by saying I'm not as well-versed as most on this topic. And so listening tonight kind of shifted a little bit about what I'm going to say just by listening to some of the peers in the room. So for me, my comment that I would like to get across tonight is not the whole Cornell versus Creekside battle, because I think that we both have very valid arguments. I think overall, the issue is the increased demand and the increased traffic to both neighborhoods, both streets. If you've ever driven down Lower Sacramento at primetime traffic, just trying to get home from the Galt Pool can take upwards of 30 minutes sometimes. There have been times where the freeway's backed up, where we're having to get in line just to get to my own neighborhood. So if you add the additional through traffic down Ranch Road, whether it's Cornell or not, you're increasing that demand threefold. So now you have all the freeway traffic not just going down Lower SAC, but it's going to be coming all the way through our neighborhoods where our kids are playing after school. We have animals that roam around, which, you know, that's not mine, but there are some, right? And I'm just thinking, like, how many of these cars that are speeding through, because they don't live there and they don't have the care and the passion to take their time through our neighborhoods, is going to be impacted by allowing either of these roads to be a through street? Another thing, too, is, so right now, Creekside is a one-way-in development. So by increasing through traffic, you're reducing our property values at that. So now we're having, you know, the additional development built, which we can do nothing about. But can we maybe look at, is there a different way that the neighborhood going into Fairway can access that? Is there something else that can be done? What about the frontage road on the freeway? Do we have to open up all of these different avenues? That's my question, right? I don't want to fight between Cornell and Creekside. Is there something else that can be explored to reduce the traffic going into both options? That's my question to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Omar Anzalda.
Good evening. My name is Omar Anzalda. I am a resident of Creekside, and I just want to speak to the same issue about possibly reducing the number of entrances to the Fair Oaks Development. And I would be against reducing those because of all the issues that have been brought up already, with my number-one concern being safety and how people drive, and they're insane. I, I don't know, some of you might recognize me as the guy in the bright orange or yellow shirts running around. And I often, when I'm running, I have to stop, because people just are not paying attention to pedestrian traffic, myself. I have to stop. I've almost gotten clipped so many times, almost every time I go out for a run. And then when I think about all the children and all the families, and there's a lot more families now in Creekside that are walking around, I'm sure they're out there right now, crossing the streets, and maybe they're looking both ways, maybe not. But when we open up those roads, and those vehicles are going to now start seeing that entrance and that straight line to their new neighborhood, they're going to hit the gas. They already do. They already do in my Creekside neighborhood when they get a straightaway. So let's also talk about some speed bumps or something like that to slow down that traffic as it's coming through. So my concern, just as with everybody else, is not just quality of life, but safety. Number one, safety. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tom Haglund.
Mayor Farmer and members of the council, thank you for tabling the approval of the Fairway Oaks Final Map tonight. As you are aware, the Final Map is not ready or eligible for approval, because it is not in conformance with the Fairway Oaks Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map. The Subdivision Map Act informs us that a Final Map cannot be recorded until it fully complies with the provisions of the Subdivision Map Act itself. The Subdivision Map Act requires that the Final Map comply with the provisions of the Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map. If it does not, the Final Map is non-compliant and cannot be approved. The Fairway Oaks Final Map, when compared side by side to the Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, is missing portions of at least two key sheets of the Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map. This is a significant omission that renders the Final Map incomplete. The two tentative map sheets that are missing are, on the Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, sheet TM-2, which shows the cross-section of four different street sections for the main Fairway Oak subdivision itself, for that new subdivision itself. And then sheet TM-5, which shows the Cornell Road cross-sections to be constructed. These Cornell Road cross-sections explicitly show a 20-foot road and an adjacent safety sidewalk separated from the roadway by a 6-inch curb. When the Planning Commission provided the developer a two-year extension to the Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map on July 14, 2022, the Planning Commission resolution contained the following language. There are no, so the language is, "There are no revisions to the approved existing Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, and the findings for approval in the original approval documents are not altered." Tonight's staff report does not address the omission to, or provide insight as to why these off-site cross-sections do not appear on the Final Map. And the staff report rely, but the staff report relies on the 2020... And the staff report rely, but the staff report relies on the 2020 staff report that brought the subdivision forward and the 2022 time extension for the tentative map. Tonight's staff report does not provide any information to the public indicating any justifiable reason the off-site improvement cross-sections for Cornell Road were eliminated. And then accordingly, the final map's omission of at least these critical off-site improvement requirements renders the final map incomplete and therefore ineligible for approval until such time as it's brought in conformance with the tentative map. So that's the technical side. Very quickly, I've had a couple of conversations with the city manager, and of course, I've been very pleased with those conversations and the process that, public process that he's outlined to, that, and I think is still defining for bringing this resolution, this issue to resolution. But I do encourage the city to take a look at and compare, make a side-by-side comparison of the tentative map and final map so that the final map can be brought in conformance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund.
No more public comment.
All right. Well, I just want to say, appreciate everybody coming tonight and speaking, and glad you all had a chance to speak a public comment. I can tell you that I would just say to keep, everybody keep apprised to the ongoing process of this, and there'll be other opportunities, I'm sure, to speak again at public comment, whether it be a planning meeting or something. So just, just keep, you know, keep requesting, pay attention to agendas that are posted, and you can always email the city clerk and ask questions about things like that. So we are going to move on to our next item, which is the Item I Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. We'll start with Mr. Pratt.
My committees have all taken the month off, so no report today.
All right. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Rodriguez.
My committees as well have taken the summer off, I think, so.
All right. Well, I myself have nothing to report either, so we will be moving on to the consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through 10 be enacted simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from council regarding the consent calendar? Nope?
Nope.
All right. Well, with that, I'll be looking for.
We, I'm sorry, we do have public.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Public comment. Go ahead.
Paul Salinas.
Thank you for the opportunity, council members, mayor, vice mayor, staff, and ladies and gentlemen. Actually, I just was looking at the item number three related to the $158,000. And it came to mind that, knowing that some of other cities have received a grant of a certain amount, but some of these cities gave the grants to schools because of our children to identify the dangers of marijuana. And, and quite frankly, I think that middle school is a good place to start, but that is a very, very important issue regarding our kids, especially with the number of suicides that we're seeing now in the areas of narcotics. But again, I just want to bring this up to you. And I forgot to mention that I am the president of the Helping Hand Association, who advocates for seniors, veterans, and others in need. And so again, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Salinas.
Harry Wenzel.
Harry Wenzel from the West Side of Galt, citizen. I'll just keep it short. The, I've had conversations with some of the seniors in town, and I, the council needs to be aware that marijuana use among seniors is actually on the rise and has been. I know they take gummies. I know it helps with a lot of things, but also it is a substance that needs to be considered. I know the DHS is looking at it. And so in, in this money that's coming in, I hope that the council, police department, et cetera, would take a look at the different ways to allocate that money. It isn't all just about enforcement. It's a lot about education. So that's all I have to say. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel.
Robert Wilson.
I just want to talk about with the same thing, you know, the Paul and Henry talked about to kind of, you know, supplement that. But anyway, my name is Robert Wilson, and I've lived in Galt over 20 years, and I'm also representing the Helping Hand Association tonight. And going, like I said, what they said, what I did was I did some research online about this grant, and different communities have actually used it in different ways. And I looked up six different, four different cities in California, and I have documentation to share with anybody up there if they're interested. And it can be allocated also for like education purposes. So that means that we have like, let's say, the drunk-driving situation, and we have the marijuana situation. Well, the schools could actually be involved in training and education, but also we could form a consortium of nonprofits in town. There's probably at least 15 ones that could be vetted, et cetera, that would be interesting. And in the future, when another grant would come up, because apparently the Highway Patrol issues these grants every so often, and I don't know how often, but I read online on the state website, under the tax code and everything, and the Highway Patrol website, that it could be like $20 to $30 million in a timeframe, but it actually didn't explain how often that was. But these other four cities, they got different amounts depending, it looks like, on their population size, et cetera. So anyway, we're going to have an opportunity to hopefully, because the police department, you know, did a great job in getting this grant, but the next time, hopefully, we could have a consortium of all these different entities in town, including like the chamber, the mayor, the city council, the city staff, the police department, and the nonprofits. And what we would do is we would like have a program, and then we would allocate the money perhaps, you know, to nonprofits, to the school sum, to the police department, and work out like everything way ahead of time. And so we have time now. It looks like it's over a year for maybe the next go-round, and, you know, we just need to find out more information, and Helping Hand is willing to supplement and work with all parties in town that are interested. Is that a good, explain anything? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Thank you.
No more.
All right. All right. If there's nothing from council, again, on the consent, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the following items. Item one is the receivable file warrants for a period ending of July 3, 2025. Item two is the minutes of the regular meeting from July 1 of 2025. Item three is the cannabis tax fund grant, fund grant award acceptance. Excuse me. Item four is the Emerald Vista Trail Extension Project Design Contract Amendment with SOMAS. Number six is going to be the lift station modification project CIP 526D Engineering Services Contract Award and Related Budget Adjustments. Item seven is the award of chemical supply contracts. Item eight is the award of task order and related budget adjustments for consultant services to prepare sewer system management, plan, audit, and update. Item nine is the approval of the Project and Expenseure Plan and Transportation Development Act Claim for fiscal year 2025, I'm sorry, 24 and 25. And number 10, approval of the personnel manual updates. Do I have a motion to approve these nine items?
Move.
Moved by the vice mayor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratt. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved four to zero. Moving on to item K, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Subject is the annexation of territory to Community Facilities District 2020-1, Public Services, Annexation Number 10 for Summerfield. Mr. Trin.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Trong, Deputy Director of Public Works. This item is the annexation of the Summerfield subdivision into the CF, Community Facility District 2020-1. Staff is recommending that city council conduct a public hearing, approve a resolution of the city council, of the city of Galt, California, calling special election and submitting to the qualified electors of territory proposed to the annex to the City of Galt Community Facility District Number 2020-1. Public service, County of Sacramento, State of California, the questions of, the questions of levying special taxes within that territory annex, annexation Number 10, Summerfield, conduct elections, approve resolutions of the city council of the city of Galt acting in the capacity as the legislative body of the City of Galt Community Facility District Number 2020-1. Public service, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the result of the social election in such community facility districts on the proposition of the annual levy of special taxes within the territory proposed to be annexed to said community facility districts to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the community facility district. Determine that the territory proposed to be annexed is added to and part of said community facility district with full legal effect, and ordering the recognition of the map of the boundaries of said community facility district, including the territory annex thereto, Annex Number 10, Summerfield.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. So the public hearing is open. Madam Clerk, do you want me to go through our script now? Is that a good time? Okay. So again, how the public hearing works, if you wish to speak on the public hearing, you can just, continue to speaker card again? I forget.
Yeah.
Okay. If you'd like to speak on this item, please grab a speaker card, you can fill out your name, and bring it up to Tina here. So you can do that anytime until I close the public hearing. So Madam Clerk, has the notice of public hearing been mailed and published in accordance with the law?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
All right. We, the report from city staff in regards to propose annexation Number 10, Summerfield, to Community Facilities District 2020-1. Can you go ahead and give that report now? Correct?
I think that's what he already did.
Oh, that was the report. Okay. I thought there was other, all right. Everybody's looking at each other like, what? All right. All right. So are there any questions from council on this item? No?
Mayor, if I, if I may, I, I missed one recommended item that was number five, introduced by Title Only and Way Further Readings of the ordinance of the city of, City Council of the City of Galt authorizing the levying of special taxes in the Community Facility District, including certain annexation territory identified as Annexation Number 10, Summerfield, into the City of Galt Community Facility District 2020-1. Public service to complete the annexation of the property to the Community Facility District.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trin. All right. So if we don't have any public comment, just going through my script here. There's no comments by council, council members, nothing? All right. City clerk, has there been any written protests received?
No, written protests have been received.
All right. City clerk, has the persons registered to vote within annexation area Number 10, Summerfield, of the Community Facilities District Number 2020-1? Are there any persons? And if so, what are the number of registered persons?
The County of Sacramento Registered Voters has certified there are no registered voters within annexation Number 10, Summerfield, of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1.
All right. Are the owners of all taxable property within the annexation area Number 10, Summerfield, of Community Facilities District 2020-1 consented to holding a special election on July 15, 2025?
Yes.
All right. Again, public comment period is open. Does city clerk concur that the special election may be held on July 15 of 2025?
Yes.
All right. So before I close the public hearing, last opportunity for anyone to speak on this. For those of you who are wondering, just a quick, what this is, we are annexing a new subdivision which is yet to be built, or in the process of being built, into our new Cities Facilities District. For more information about what a CFD is, you could reach out to the city clerk. Roughly, it is a facilities district that levies funds every year for fire, public works, public safety, et cetera, et cetera. It's like a lighting and landscape district. So these are commonplace for all the new subdivisions. So if nobody wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Last chance. All right. And I will be looking for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, California, calling for a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Galt, Community Facilities District Number 2020-1. Public services, County of Sacramento, State of California, the question of levying special tax within that territory, annexation Number 10, Summerfield. Looking for a motion to approve that resolution.
I so move as read.
All right. Move by Councilmember Pratt, and seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
And this next item, you or I, Tina?
I certify, I, I certify the election by stating that the official ballot has been open and that all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot.
All right. Thank you. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as legislative body of City of Galt, Community Facilities District 2020-1. Public services, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the results of a special election in such community facility district on the proposition of the annual levy of special taxes within the territory proposed to be annexed to said community facilities district to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the community facilities district, determining that the territory proposed to be annexed is added to and part of said community facilities district in full legal effect, and ordering the recording of a map of the boundaries of said community facilities district, including the territory annex thereto, Annexation Number 10, Summerfield. Looking for a motion to do what I just said.
Could you read that again?
Yeah.
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rodriguez. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Resolution approved four to zero. All right. And last but not least, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as Annexation Number 10, Summerfield, into the City of Galt Community Facilities District Number 2020-1. Public services to complete the annexation of the property to the Community Communities District. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll move as read.
Moved by Councilmember Pratt again, seconded by the mayor. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Resolution is approved four to zero. That's your bedtime story for this evening, folks in the audience. All right. Moving on to item K two, which is the West Side Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District 1990-02, public hearing, approving the engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and assessments. and assessments to be levied and levying the annual assessment for fiscal year 2526. Mr. Trin?
Thank you, Mayor. For, for the, for the next three, Landscape and Lighting District, this presentation is for the three. This is an annual report that SAS provides every year for these three L and L, LODs.
So, Mr. Trin, just to clarify, the presentation you're gonna give us is gonna be for all three items in one time?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Got it.
The staff is, staff is recommending council receive a presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed 2025-26 assessments for the following LODs, the West Side Galt Landscape and Lighting District 1990-02, the Northeast Galt LOD, Galt LOD Number 3. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the LODs and levying of the annual assessment for fiscal year 2025-26. This is a map that shows the, the three, the West Side Galt LODs, the Northeast and the Number 3. It also shows a CFD 2020-1 and 2020-2. The magent or purple, I guess, is the west side, the orange is the northeast side, and the blue is the LOD Number 3. For the West Side Galt Landscape and Lighting Districts, there were no annexation mergers or subdivision. The assessment for the parcel remained the same. Typical assessment for a single family in this area ranges from $36.62 to $221.80, depending on the benefit zone the parcel lies within. Similar, Northeast Galt LODs, there were no annexation, de-annexation or parcel subdivision, so it remained the same since inception, since 1990. And the typical assessments for a single-family residential is $51.70 to $301.85, depending on which benefit zones the parcel lies within. Galt LOD Number 3, no annexation or subdivision of existing parcels this year. The, this LOD has a CPI that's, that was indexed, it's 2.4% for the current 2025-26 years, so the proposed assessment increased $10.01 to $427.04. All three of these LODs, the services essentially through the budget process, we, we go through the process of creating budget and just even them out to the, to the budget process. So after the, the presentation, staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing regarding the levying of the proposed current year 2025-26 assessment for the following LODs, the West Side Galt LODs 1990-02, the Northeast Galt LOD and Galt LOD Number 3. And upon closing of the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the LODs and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2025-26.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trin. All right. I'm gonna open the public hearing for this item. Actually, Mr. Spandario, can we, can we, so he gave the presentation for all three. Can we encompass all three of these?
Yeah. So just open, and that's what he contemplates, you're gonna open one public hearing for all three, take any public comment as to any of the three, and then close it all, all at once, and then you can do one motion approving the assessments for all three.
Right. Okay. Thank you. All right. We're gonna, so to be clear, if anybody is interested, we are gonna be opening the public hearing for Items K2, 3, and 4, which is the three lighting and landscape district items on the agenda. So the public hearing is open. If you wish to speak on this item or any of these three items, you can come and fill out a speaker card, and you can head to the clerk, and you will be allowed to do so. Do we have any, do I need to go through the script with you? No? Okay. All right. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions about any of these items? We're all clear on what it is? Okay? Thought so. All right. So... Anybody wish to speak? No? All right. Closing the public comment. I will be looking for a motion to approve the following items. I'm gonna switch classes, though. Old age is terrible. All right. Looking for a motion to approve a resolution approving the West Side Galt Lighting Landscape and Maintenance District 1990-02, engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2025, and a resolution approving the Northeast Galt Lighting and Landscape and Lighting District engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2025 and 26, and a resolution approving the City of Galt Lighting, Galt Landscape and Lighting District Number 3 engineer's report and levying of annual taxes for, annual assessments for fiscal year 2025 and 26. Do I have a motion to approve those three items?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratton. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Resolutions are approved 4-0. Moving on to the regular calendar item this evening, and the regular calendar's gonna be L1, is the approval of a resolution authorizing the issuance of a parity bonds of Community Facilities District 2020-2 for Liberty Ranch designated 2025 Special Tax Parity Bonds, Series B, appointing fiscal agent, approving first supplemental fiscal agent agreement and a purchase contract, and authorizing negotiation of terms of the sale of said bonds, approving preliminary official statement, and authorizing preparation of the final official statement, and approving continuing disclosure certificate. Mr. Trin?
Thank you, Mayor. This item has to do with the second bond issuance for Liberty Ranch, and I invite Eric from the consultant team to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Eric Scriven with NHA Advisors. We're the municipal advisor to the city on this transaction. Just a little background, Liberty Ranch Community Facilities District was formed in 2020. It encompasses two improvement areas, Liberty Ranch does, Number 1 and 2. Really, the bonds are related to improvement area Number 1. The development is 696 single-family homes and 250 multifamily units. Originally, in 2020, there was a maximum authorized bond issuance amount of $83 million. In 2023, $11 million was issued to fund public infrastructure. And the proposal on the, on the table right now is an additional $14,295,000 bond issue for reimbursing essentially public improvements and infrastructure that had been put into the ground by the developer.
Tina's gone.
She left, too. She leaves, it doesn't work.
Piece of paper always is...
What do you need?
Next slide, please.
Sounds good. So a refresher, Page 2, special tax. The levy of the special tax is governed by the rate and method of apportionment, which was also formulated back in 2020 when the CFD was formed. There's two specific special taxes, just as a reminder. One, special tax A is really the facilities special tax that pay, can pay debt service and pay-as-you-go costs for public improvements as well. Special tax B, which is the priority special tax, is essentially the payment for ongoing maintenance and other services that the city provides to the residents in the area. And that, again, is the priority, and the residual, if you will, within the limitations is for special tax A, which is extremely important. That was discussed at length when the district was formed. Again, the bonds will be secured by special tax A, paid by the property owners. Initially, that's the developer and eventually the homeowners. Delinquent property owners subject, will be subject to judicial foreclosure, which means if they don't make their tax payments, special tax payments, similar to not making their property tax payments, they're subject to foreclosure. The tax is levied on the county property tax rolls annually, similar to what you just did for the landscaping and lighting districts. The city has no liability for payment on these bonds, only to levy, or set the levy, I should say, collect and enforce the special tax. District pays all CFD administration costs, including city's reasonable staff time to set, set the levy and follow up on various CFD items. So the CFD budget is annually determined to create the special tax requirement, which is then levied, again, similar to what you just did for L&Ls. However, tax cannot exceed the maximum established in the RMA. Next slide. So the current praised value of the land out there in Liberty Ranch is $102 million approximately. So the RMA and the policy of the City of Galt is to not allow an issuance of bonds any more than what would create a four-to-one value to lien. So essentially, that $102 million divided by four, that's the limit, and then we deduct the 2023 bonds, and that's how we get to the $14,295,000 par amount. We're estimating that the interest rate is approximately 5.5%. And again, as a reminder, the special tax limitation for all special taxes and existing ad valorem taxes and any overrides for school district bonds and other things is 1.9%. Any questions on any of this, Ray?
I have a quick question. It just dawned on me. Are there any other, it's a 30-year term. Are there any opportunities for, you know, re-bargaining these? And then who does that?
Refinancing?
Refinancing, thank you.
Absolutely. It feels like it's a high-water mark right now for interest rates. We don't know, you know, time will tell. But usually when these bonds are sold, they have a 10-year lockout period where they cannot be refinanced. With these bonds, there is some exceptions in the sense that the, they're land-secured bonds, and we do have some provisions for homeowners to pay off the bonds with a prepayment penalty if they wanna remove that debt from the, their specific parcel. But that is a great question, and bonds are refinanced all the time if we have overall reduction in interest rates.
So who, who get, who starts that process?
The city finance department, you know, wanting to lower the payments and special tax levies on the residents out there would initiate that. Usually consultants are paying attention to that, too, and they may come in with a proposal to the city finance department that will percolate toward, you know, to the City Council eventually, if it makes sense.
How about, is there an opportunity for early payoff for the whole bond? So if you're refinancing and you can get a lower rate, you can pay it off earlier.
Absolutely. Just what I was saying, but there usually, on the whole bond, there's a 10-year lockout period.
Yeah.
Typically. So that's in order to, that's standard in the marketplace, and that enables the bonds to get a better interest rate, because investors are fairly picky. They like to, if you want a shorter prepayment...
I'm not talking about refinancing, I'm talking about paying off the whole note.
Well, paying it off by, from whom? I mean, it has to, the city is not on the hook for these bonds.
Right.
So it would be...
But there are, I've been on bond committees where we ended it early. By refinancing.
Now, this is a different bond. This is paid and secured by the landowners, so each of them individually could pay down or off their specific parcel, but for all of the homeowners, 600, 700 homeowners to collectively join and decide they are gonna come up with the cash to pay off that remaining bond lien on their house, that's highly unlikely. But individually, they could, there are provisions for them to do that. And there's no reason for the city to do it. It's not a city debt.
Okay.
But you said there was a penalty, an early payment penalty?
Prepayment, yeah, there's usually, prepayment penalty. At the, at the 10-year mark, that would be zero.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I have a question. The, so I buy a house in, in Liberty Ranch, for example, hypothetically. The, the bond, what is the length for the homeowner? What is the length of the bond? Is that gonna depend on how many houses are eventually built? Because what I'm asking, and maybe I don't understand it correctly, but so homeowner buys it, they begin to start paying that. What if, say, the first, obviously, more homes that are built, more homes that are sold, you have more people contributing to the payoff of that bond? If the whole thing was built out right away, say, within a couple of years, then hypothetically, that bond would get paid off sooner, correct? Whereas if it didn't, that it would be, it would go longer?
There's a set repayment schedule on each of these bonds, and they're, you know, the 2023 transaction. And we're gonna show the payment schedule.
So each, so each, each home that's sold has a set schedule of payments that...
Yeah, they're being levied at the 1.9%. Right now, the developer is being levied at the full 1.9%.
And that's aggregate? That's, that's, that's property tax, like everybody else has?
Correct.
And then you have the point eight, well, it's point nine roughly, right? Give or take? The total together is 1.9?
Yeah. Some of that is for the services.
Yeah, right.
So for the special tax B, which is the priority, and then the residual up to that 1.9% goes to pay the debt service, but also if there, if, you know, we don't, there's another constraint, which is that value to lien. We, we don't wanna over-leverage the properties, so the value to lien needs to be four-to-one, you know?
Right. So I think I'm trying, what I'm trying, I'm trying to, let me rephrase my question. I'm just trying to rephrase it so that people can, like in layman's terms, people can understand it clearly. A homeowner that someone's looking to buying a home over there, what is, they're gonna be on the hook for the one, how long, for what term? Is there a lock term?
Each of these transactions is a 30-year transaction, so we'll show that the first one matures in 2053, you know, the transaction done two years ago. This one will mature in 2055. At some point, there will be no capacity to do any more, and, and/or the limitation is $83 million. We don't foresee that being the, the true constraint. There may be a little bit more ability to fund and repay these infrastructure costs, but we don't foresee that being a large number beyond these two transactions.
So if I have a 30-year mortgage, I'm pretty much gonna be paying this 1.9, the whole term of that, even if I paid a more, I'm still on the hook that 30 years for the one, right?
Thirty, it might be a little longer than 30 years, 'cause we'll, if we have a third transaction, because there's capacity to repay the, the developer, additional infrastructure costs per the development agreement, that was, this is what's driving this whole transaction, the, the CFD, then that, that would be a 30-year transaction, it would wrap, so it'd be 30 years from that, which probably would be in another year or two, because they're rapidly building out the infrastructure.
And if, and if, let's say a homeowner buys a home there and, say, 10 years down the road, they sell that home, obviously, when the transact, when a home sells and it's, it's reevaluated, let's say that, that said value of that home went up, then obviously it's 1.9, so it's gonna be based on the, the value of the home, not the original, is it, so it's not locked into the original purchase price for the whole 30. It's gonna, it gonna change if there's ownership changes and the property is reassessed, the 1.9 will vary in the value, right?
The debt payment will be what's levied, and then that's the special tax A, and then the special tax B will be varied, and that's in perpetuity. That's for the services again, and that will levy...
Okay.
...in perpetuity.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Thanks. Proceed if you...
Next slide, please. So this is the payment schedule. The, the first transaction was done in 2023. You can see that in the purple, and the payment... You can see that in the purple, and the payments ascend two percent a year. The twenty twenty, the, this is an estimate on the 2025 transaction, which would mature in 2055. You can see, if you make that a little smaller, that the, the blue, the light blue wraps around for the last two years. So go back to that one slide, I think it's important.
I'll go through.
Just to answer Mayor's question. Got one. So you can see the last two years. So if there's a third transaction in another year or two, just to, for the final amount, that, we, we see that there is a little additional value, so there may be another transaction, then that would wrap just a little bit further, beyond. But there, there are several constraints. The top constraint is the eighty-three million, but then you can't go above four-to-one value to lien, and then, of course, you can't go above one point nine percent.
This bond is for the entire?
Improvement Area One, which is the seven hundred homes and two hundred and fifty multifamily.
So Home One has already been built, correct, and occupied?
I don't know that. No, I don't think so. There, it's, I think they've, have they built the models?
Yeah, there's people, I drove through there a couple of days ago, there's people living in a few of those houses.
So these people are already going to start their next, their first house payment, assuming they combine everything in an escrow account, is they're going to start, or this first year, they're going to pay toward this bond, but the last house may not be built for five years. They, so the House One has been paying this for five years. Is that last house going to be paying the same amount to that bond?
No, the bond will mature at some point.
Right.
Right.
So don't buy early.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't like you saying that. Inside information.
Okay. I understand.
Any questions? Okay, next slide. So the action this evening, if council choose to proceed, is to, as, as in the resolution, is to approve the first supplemental fiscal agreement, which basically modifies the fiscal agreement, which is the governing document for the bondholders, sets all the terms and conditions of the bonds, and includes terms for the 2025 bonds. The preliminary official statement and continuing disclosure agreements approval. The POS is the document that goes out to investors, has all the pertinent information on the risks and the security of the, of the security for investments. CDA, Continuing Disclosure Agreement, very important. That's also, you know, goes, investors rely upon that, and it basically is a promise to provide information on annual basis on the payments and other particulars and metrics of the, of the bonds that are important in the, in the development. And then the bond purchase agreement, which is signed on the date of the bond sale. There is no deal until the, the bonds are sold to investors or actually the order period. That day is when the underwriter presents the deal, interest rates essentially, and the prepayment terms that we discussed, to the city for approval. And if they're agreeable, you know, the rates are agreeable, then that bond purchase contract is signed that day, and, and that's when you have a transaction, and two weeks later, you usually close. So that's, those are the main documents that are being considered this evening. Last slide, I think that's it. Today is July fifteen. If, if approval occurs this evening, the expectation is to put the preliminary official statement out in a couple of days to investors and market the transaction to investors, which are individuals, mutual funds, and other large investors, and then sell those bonds, have a bond sale, order period in a week or two, depending on the market conditions. If all goes well, that bond purchase contract is signed that day, and then the closing occurs a couple of weeks after that. That's it.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation, sir. If you want to sit around for a sec, just in case, maybe we...
Yeah.
Council has any questions? Council, any, any questions?
Yeah, just for the public clarification, you know, the maximum property tax is on that particular development is one point nine, that's what I heard, right? What that mean? Can you explore that?
One point nine percent is the maximum set in the goals and policies that the city adopted some years ago. So currently, the levy on parcels, well, out there, you already have a transaction that you've done, so it's, the limitation is one point nine, of which one percent is for actual ad valorem property taxes, that, some of which goes to the county, some goes to the city, some goes to the school districts. So it's that, we'll just call it point nine percent, that is what is included in special tax A and special tax B. A is what is used for the debt service, and special tax B is for the maintenance and the services that the city needs to pay for public safety, parks, and other things of that nature. So the limitation is one point nine.
So that's the maximum property tax on that?
That's correct.
Mr. Trunk, we have some other development going, going on this city. You might know what's the percentage property tax on the other development? I just want to be, because each development, they might be have the different property tax, because if somebody can buy the house, there might be some development, their property tax can be different than the other development, right? Or our city?
Trunk, I'll, I'll answer that. Okay.
Yes, you want to?
Yeah. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council again.
Just for the clarification to the public.
Yeah, and other areas, we have similar processes, but they are a little bit different. So Liberty Ranch does have a development agreement between the city and the development that specifically points out the one point nine percent. So it's really not negotiable for us again until that agreement expires. So that's kind of set for Liberty Ranch. Everywhere else in the city, we do something similar but different. So we have the 2020 dash one Maintenance and Public Safety CFD. Then we also usually allow others to bond for infrastructure using the skip program. But we try to set a policy where we don't like them to go to one point nine, usually one point seven, maybe one point seven-five.
So that mean there might be, other developer might be a property tax a little bit less than this one point nine percent? I just want to clarify with the public, and thank you.
Yeah, this particular bond is specific to this project at Liberty Ranch. So, right? Correct, that's the bottom, yeah. So I would just encourage somebody in the housing market, you know, there's a lot of development going on in Galt, and, you know, just do your due diligence when you buy a home, because it can vary out there. So, is Mr. Scriven, right, is your name?
Yes.
So unless we have other questions, no? No? Okay. I don't have any further questions. Want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, with no further, I will look for a...
Sorry.
Yeah. Oh, public comment, yeah. Thank you.
We have a public comment. Harry Wenzel?
That's why Tina's here, keeping us on the, keeping us on the track.
Counsel, I'm here again. You didn't think you could get away that quick, did you? So you have all these elements that are going on. First off, I'd like to say, this is some of the most intelligent conversation by the council, since I've been attending these meetings for about four years. It's right in what I've been thinking about, that you have all these elements going on. So one element is the bond. So you see the, the dark blue line? Just, it, it seems to me that that dark blue line should be more level or should decrease, maybe, but it, it should just be more level because the bond is fixed, because we're paying investors off a fixed amount. Then you have the light, okay, and that's for the, the administration and the upkeep, okay? I'm a little bit unclear on that and why we collect that through the tax bill, but I guess it's like a lighting and landscaping district. So now we have this other thing, which is, I guess, is to, to pay for the, the water system and pay for the sewer system, okay? And then we have another element that's not really talked about, and that is, we're financing something, and that something is what we paid, or what, what was paid for the infrastructure, the sewer and the water and all of those lines and the lift stations, et cetera. And so I guess the, the question is, is that okay? Is that the right amount? When, in this whole process, who is it that determines that amount that we actually, that's what we spent on it? I mean, it's like going in and buying a car, and you get to the end, and they say, okay, your payment is this, and you go, but how much is the car? I mean, I'm getting it waxed, I'm getting it, you know, insured and all of that. And so I think that's a council, I think that's a council responsibility, is to know, and then also, when that gets collected, is that going to be apportioned in some way, or is that going to go directly back to Public Works? Which I'm assuming Public Works is going to take care of all of that. Certainly, I don't think that, I don't know who else would take care of it if it wasn't Public Works. So through, that's going to be, and I guess it's like, you know, and then the other thing that's a little bit confusing is you, when you have the one point nine, we start talking about, okay, we like to see it at one point seven or whatever, but it doesn't connect those dots to me. So I'm just a citizen giving you some data points and saying, I'm trying to boil this complicated three hundred-page document, which I started reading it, and I don't know what it says, but I really like, if nothing else, I want the council to know, I really like that you've got it kind of boiled back in your head, it's like, okay, I'm going to be making my house payment, or, okay, if I pay my house off, I'm going to be making a payment. And right there, there's going to be school bonds, there's going to be, you know, this, this bond for the sewer and all of that, and then I've got like a lighting and landscaping district. And I would think that if I were living over there, which I don't plan on it, because I don't think I'll ever make that kind of money, but I, I would be asking, why am I paying the one percent in the first place? Okay? That's my, I mean, I know it goes to schools and all of that, but how are we, how are the other people, like where I live, is being paid? So I think it's in the hands of the council, as I always say, and they, I, I have a lot of confidence for, you know, what you're doing. If you, you know, I'm not going to tell you how to vote, for sure, but I want to bring those data points up.
Thank you, Mrs. Wenzel. Thank you, sir. Any additional public comment?
No comment.
So, so just to clarify for the public, so Mr. Arias, maybe you can elaborate, I just want to, just layman terms. We have a develop, there was a development agreement input in place with this developer many years ago, I have it, I don't know, twenty-four, it was a long time ago, right? And in that agreement, they were guaranteed the opportunity to go out for bond to, and this, the purpose of this bond is to reimburse, which is a commonplace legal thing to do. They're going out for bond to eventually collect from the future homeowners in the subdivision to reimburse themselves for the infrastructure that they had to put in for the subdivision. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can agree with it, don't agree with it. I mean, you know, all I would say again is, we all have a choice to buy a house in subdivisions that have things like this, or we don't. I just advise people to read the, read the, read their contracts and, and know what they're up against. And, yeah, again, so the council, this council basically is obligated to, this is just a formality, more or less, so agree or don't agree with it, we're legally bound by the original development agreement. So he is, Mr. Scriven was just here to break it down and go through the motions of this and explain to people who are listening what this is about. Yeah, I don't know what else there is to be said. I just want to explain that for people that are kind of scratching their heads, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Wenzel. We always appreciate you keeping us in check. So if there's no further comment from council? All right, staff, we're good. I will be looking for a motion to do one of three things, actually, all of three things. One is to authorize the issuance of 2025 special tax bonds, Series B for and on behalf of the City of Galt Community Facilities District, number 2020 dash two Liberty Ranch, Improvement Area Number One. Item two is approving and directing the execution of a supplemental fiscal agent agreement and bond purchase agreement. And item three, approving the, approving the, I think there's a spelling error here, approving the formation of, shouldn't it be formation or form? I don't know. Preliminary official statement. And item four, approving the sale of such bonds. And number five, approving other related documents and actions. So those five items, looking for a motion to approve those, or a resolution to adopt those, I'm sorry.
All move is red.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Pratton.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rodriguez. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Resolution is approved, four to zero. All right. We're on the downslide now. Communication, is there any communication this evening?
Just a reminder, the August fifth regular six o'clock meeting is canceled. There'll be a four o'clock special closed session meeting due to National Night Out to allow council members and staff to attend.
All right, thank you. Item N, City Clerk, City Clerk's report?
None.
All right. Item O, comments by staff, Mr. Arias?
Yes, we have a couple. Police Chief Kalanowski.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was going to congratulate Chris for the new glasses, but he just took them off, so we'll skip that. Staff likes it. Second of all, on August fifth, as Tina noted, we have National Night Out. I mentioned it last week, or last meeting. So that's six to eight p.m., we'll be at Meadowview Park, we'll be at the sports complex and community park. We'll reach out to council about rides, but we would encourage the public to participate at one of those three locations. There's food and other opportunities to engage with members of the community and get to know your neighbors, and so we look forward to this opportunity, and we will have much of the department out at all three locations. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Then the only other comments we have, we have, oops. We have a couple director changes. I want to welcome new Community Development Director Jenny Carloni. Obviously, her first meeting, I think, first weekend, right? She came back, so we were very excited.
I didn't even notice there was a new staff member sitting there, I'm sorry. I was so focused on all these long scripts, I was like, oh, there's a new person down there.
We're very excited. And then unfortunately, it's also Finance Director Penny Buckman's last council meeting. So while we welcome one, we say goodbye to another.
Can't keep the team together for even like a month?
I'm sorry, I missed also staff comment. Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis has comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mayor and City Council, I'd just like to thank a couple people for our IDC that we had last week. We have some incredible sponsors, Cal Waste, Smud, Walmart, and Linda's House of Balloons. I'd like to thank our staff, Jackie Garcia, and all of our Parks and Rec staff that did an incredible job. Public Works for helping us with the road closures, and PD for just being there to keep us all safe. We had a hundred and forty-four runners for the Ton Run, which is, I believe, the second highest number that we've had, and then seventy-seven floats in the, since 2011, I think we started this. This was probably the easiest parade we've done. It's probably the biggest one. Maybe we finally just have our act together. My wife wanted to know why I was home so early, because she usually expects me later than that. But I just want to thank our staff, they did a great job. Too many names to mention, but they did an incredible job.
All right, thanks, sir. We'll move on to comments by the City Council. Mr. Pratton?
I attended Fourth of July events. Thank you very much, Director Solis. That was, yeah, it was well-run. What we saw on the front of the parade, it was a lot of people out there. Turned out to be a nice day. Welcome Jennifer to our group here, and just wanted to say that I attended yesterday, I met with, along with Councilmember Rodriguez, Child Action Incorporated. So this is a, this is a government program that, that helps fund childcare, and they've been around for a while and have...
for a while, and, uh, ha, they were in Galt quite a bit, and then, uh, they lost quite a bit during, uh, the downturn, but, uh, they're trying to make a comeback. They're already in our community, um, helping with some children, uh, ages three to, three to thirteen, I believe. Um, so anyway, I've got some information on that. I'm sure Mr. Rodriguez will probably, uh, comment on it a little bit, but, uh, it was, it was good. They're gonna also reach out to our elementary school to, uh, to promote, and also, uh, our businesses. So, uh, Director Mendez, um, you'll probably be hearing from them, if you haven't already. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, thank you for staff, uh, doing different responsibility. Thank you, Armando Solis. He did excellent job on a portuguese. Thank you, chief. Keep the city safe. Thank you all the directors doing an excellent job on their responsibility. Thank you for the public comment. Public comment is very important for me. I believe every council member, these public comments is very important. Thank you for every person come to join this meeting. I would like to welcome and congratulations to new community development director Jennifer Carloni. And I also like to thank you, whatever time Penny you did with us. Excellent job. And thank you. Thank you. That's all, uh, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Rodriguez?
Um, first, I'd like to welcome Jennifer. Thank you. This was a good meeting to start. I don't think Penny's first meeting was the greatest. Might be why she left. Um, but welcome. We, we don't bite hard, so. Um, yes, I met, uh, Child Action along with, uh, Mr. Pratton. Um, and one of the things we talked about, so I'm glad Armando walked back in, one of the things we talked about, they, um, is they're looking for some outside the box ideas. And so I told them about our SOAR program and our after-school program, and seeing, you know, maybe we try to explore some, um, sort of expansion, that if they have funding coming in, that maybe there's some scholarships or something, so people who are, cannot afford SOAR or the summer camps, or, you know, whatever, that, that maybe Child Action may be able to help facilitate that. And so, um, it's maybe some, I mean, I don't know that we have the capacity to do that, and/or if you even want the expanded capacity to do that, but it just, another opportunity, if there's funding there, you know, it might be something. So, um, I forgot to bring that pamphlet, so maybe you can give that to him, and I can get you the extra one.
Yeah.
Um, just to, uh, so, it, it, you know, it might not work out, but it might be something just at least to look at and see if we can expand that part of SOAR or something. Um, and maybe it's an obvious, uh, conversation that this, the school district has brought into as well, since obviously you, we still use our facilities, correct, for SOAR?
Yeah, uh, about two years ago, they've took over the after-school program. We still run the summer program.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, and, um, they've expanded their free program throughout all of their elementary school.
Okay, so they, that might be a better fit for them, unless we can figure out a summer, you know, to expand the summer program.
Yeah.
Obviously for the older children. So, um, I wanted to thank the chief and PD for applying for that cannabis grant. Um, I have applied for grants, they're not easy, they do take a lot of work, and they're very specific. So, um, it is my understanding that once you receive a grant, or when you submit a grant, you tell them what you're going to do, correct? And so when you receive that money, that's what you gotta do. So, um, so I appreciate that, because obviously your team had to put together a program. And I did see in your, in your staff report, that some of it does include education and, and things like that. So I really appreciate that, that outside the box. I do also appreciate the public comments that, uh, maybe we think outside, maybe we look in, out, into a bigger box next year, or for future grants, where outside organizations can either also participate or also get grants. That may be coincide with city grants or something like that. Um, but I do really appreciate, because I've been there, done that with the grants, and it's not easy, and you gotta put it together. So I appreciate staff doing that. And I know other departments do different grants as well. Um, more power to you, 'cause it's not my favorite thing to do. Um, and I know it's hard, and it takes a lot of time and, and everything, so I really appreciate that. Um, I, unfortunately, was unable to attend IDC. I, we had some family things happening. Uh, but I have heard nothing but great reports. Everyone just loved it, and as I knew it would go well. I didn't know you got to go home early, so I don't know if we need to cut your salary a little bit or something, but, um, but I appreciate your staff really, really works hard. In fact, I walked into, um, the coffee shop and didn't really pay attention. I sat down, got my computer out, was starting to work, and Sean came over and go, well, are you gonna introduce her? And realized I was sitting next to Jackie and the new, um, market manager. So I was able to meet her, and that was, that was great. And just, so then I was interested in what they were talking about, so I didn't get very much work done, and, you know, kind of listened. And, you know, you've got a great staff there. We've got great staff that work for us, and it's, it's wonderful, and I can't wait to see where that goes. So, so thank you, and please thank all your staff. And, and I, and I apologize, because I never know if it's Public Works staff or Parks and Rec staff, but I was driving down Curly Inn today, and man, those landscapers were out there working hard in that heat, and it looked great. Um, I, you know, I was really impressed. The one thing I, um, I, I know this is different departments, but the one thing that I would, would be kind of nice to look into, is that I noticed we have this beautifully cut grass, and everything looks good, and they're out there working hard. But they're, they're with weed eaters, and they're on their lawn mowers, and there's trash. And they're not gonna carry a bag to pick up the trash, too. So I, I'm wondering if we can somehow coordinate with our trash guy, or with, I don't know what his name is, the public trash guy, um, and see if he can come up behind them at some point and, and pick, because when it's all manicured and nice, it does, the trash doesn't get hidden in the, in the grass. So, um, it wasn't bad, but it, but Curly Inn really looked really nice, so I was very happy, very happy. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Since you stole my thunder on that one, and that one, and that one.
Okay, we're going home?
We'll just go ditto, ditto, ditto. All right, let's find something here you didn't say. Yeah. No, it was a great, it was a great Fourth of July. I mean, I can go on and on, but one of my favorite times of year. Um, parade's always awesome. Um, you know, but I, I think, you know, there's a lot of people involved. You have Public Works, you have the police doing all the, you know, working on the, of the safety, the road closures, you have Public Works doing the road closures, you have Parks and Rec and, and Jackie and all her team, and everybody's involved in the planning of the parade. And, and apparently, so I wanna thank Jackie again for being, um, a guest on our show the other day. And, uh, you know, they planned for the parade, like, as soon as it's over, they're already planning for like the next parade, which is Chris's parade, and then just like a constant rotation. So, there's a lot of logistics that go into it, and a lot of moving parts. And I think that, uh, I think the community, you know, really appreciates, 'cause like I, like I was telling her on, uh, when we were interviewing her, you know, as Galt grows, like, it's the parades, and it's these events that keep that small-town feel. If you take those away, and I don't know how many people I've had come in that I've spoke to recently that were from Lodi, and they go, we don't even do, we don't do parades in Lodi. And actually, I don't think they do a parade in Elk Grove either, so, I think, Chris, you should move. I mean, I don't even know why I'd live there. I mean, no parades, I'd be like a, if I was looking at, if I was looking at a house, I'd be like, do you guys do a parade here? Yeah, okay, I'm gonna go look in a different town. So, but no, we appreciate all the work. And I, I wanna give a shout out to the people that are probably underappreciated in that process, and those are after the parade's over, and you have this like decimated landscape from the parade with all kinds of leftover stuff, candy, whatever. The people that are walking their route with garbage cans and stuff, in the heat of the day, 'cause that's when, about that time that it wraps up, and they're out there picking up stuff, and after everybody's done and the fanfare's done, they're out there cleaning up. So, you know, a shout out to those people. So please pass that along. Um, uh, welcome Jennifer. Um, cor, pronounce your name for me, Carloni?
Carloni.
Carloni. Well, between you and Mr. Splendario, we almost have like a mob family going out here, looking at people's last names. Yeah, welcome aboard, and, uh, wish you luck, Penny, in your new, um, just let me, you're going to Mantica, right? Is it Mantica? No, I'm so common, because we keep switching people with Mantica. It's like we're trading, I feel like we're like doing Pokemon cards. I'll trade you this person for that person.
We call it the prisoner swap.
Well, good luck, Penny, on your new venture. Um, oh, that's right, it's not, you're going to, yeah, I remember now what it is. Good luck. And for your short stay here, thank you for what you did for us, and, and, uh, I guess we'll wait for your successor. Um, other than that, I mean, Bonnie covered some other stuff. We just, yeah, so, but no, thank you. So I guess I'll just leave this with just saying hello to my wife at home. Today is our thirtieth anniversary today, so, yeah, so I don't know if she's watching, probably not, but anyways, happy thirtieth anniversary. So with that, I will close the meeting at seven forty. Good night.